Okay.
Tuesday, November twelve, twenty nineteen, six P M. Animalso's sitting down for. Animalso's sitting down. One point oh roll call.
From?
Here.
Case Smith?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Rodsick?
Here.
Schaefer?
Here.
Wymer?
Here.
Two point oh but.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
October twenty eighth, twenty nineteen, right up and also mean.
Move to approve.
First by Betty.
Second.
Second by Ryan. Any corrections or adjustments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Cherry. Four point oh public hearings done. Five point oh proclamations done. Six point oh old business. Six point one Danielle Urban Remodel Report for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty nineteen.
We've reviewed the report, um, to the best of our knowledge, it's accurate. I know there's a lot there to review, but... Unless there's any questions, I'd recommend approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
First my case, I have my rich.
I have one question. This LMI money, um, what's gonna be our plan to, uh, distribute that?
Um, I guess we don't have a plan in place, and that's something we've discussed in the past, I think, um... Off the top of my head, I think what I would propose i- in the future establishing is some, some sort of money to go back into older housing infrastructure, um, in terms of rehabbing that, remodeling that. Since we're investing the money into new housing, we need to go back and take care of the existing, so, it's my thought.
Well, we've never done anything with it yet. It'd be nice to find a way to utilize it.
Well, we did discuss last year trying to come up with something, and we, it may be that we need to sit down, have a workshop, and discuss options. Cause I know we've, we have discussed about some limits and so forth, and I did talk to Jacob a little bit about, uh, the other, last week, about a potential of whether or not we could use some of that LMI money to maybe help some low to moderate income housing for water bills if they get behind or in need of some, some form. So, yeah, I think he was gonna look into whether or not that's an option to be able to utilize the money for that.
Come up with an application on qualifications to...
Right. And, and it's for need, so it's, but it's not a full, wouldn't be a full, you know, pay off the whole bill, but... Maybe, maybe help in winter time with heating costs go up and have full water bills and so forth, so... That was one thought that I had to, he and I discussed last week.
Well, it'd be nice to find some way to help increase our tax base by utilizing it.
Yeah.
Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Cherry. Six point two survey of two sixties Main Street possible fail of a recent property to the...
Uh, earlier today, you guys received the report from the surveyor. Uh, basically outlined the encroachment to the city's property on the north and to the property, uh, to the west, uh, of approximately one third of a foot. It's not a large amount, but it is, it is, uh, not compliant with the building permit that was submitted, um, so, uh... Uh, I've already talked with the property owners to the west, and I think they're agreeable to, to reaching some sort of arrangement, uh, of like an easement, um, and I think if, um... The owner, uh, at this property agrees to that, and we can work out, uh, something for them to purchase the city's property to the north. That'll really resolve the issues, um...
Is there any fines or something that comes from the fact that somebody just goes out and willy-nilly makes the decision they wanna just move forward, so they just do? I mean, I get so why he can buy the property from the city, and so why he can give the adjacent property owner money for what he's encroached on, but the bottom line is somehow these ordinances that we have, and not just that, but Real Estate one oh one, if you don't own it, you don't touch it. Like, I, is there, is this the answer? He just...
There's currently no fines in place, uh, for this. We've discussed some different sorts of fines to add a little bit more backbone to our building permit process, particularly just, um... What we've discussed is not really related here, but more for people who build without a permit, and then we fine them later, that, the, the fine would apply there, but we haven't really discussed one where they don't really abide by the permit, um... I mean, we could, I think in this situation, we just try to correct the issue, um...
Well, let me ask...
You get into the, the, trying to determine if it was intentional or, uh, um, if it was just negligence.
Well, when you build without, I mean, he was told standing here before us, wait until you own the property and move forward anyway, so that to me is pretty intentional.
Well, and you said the permit process says that they will locate the pins or the corners or their property line.
Correct.
And he failed to do that.
Correct.
So, that is a violation, should be a fine for failure to abide by the building code.
I just think if we don't put our foot down, it's gonna continue, if not, I mean, it's, this isn't the first time and probably not the last time that people push it, and then it's not fair to the neighbors, it's not fair to, it's, it's not fair to anybody. It's not fair to the public.
I, I agree, um, I, there's just nothing in place right now.
Can I speak? Yeah, sure. I'm the property owner to West, my mic is high. Julie Querfstein. Uh, there was a building permit I'm sure pulled in two thousand two when the first addition was, uh, built by Dean Wood. He was in violation, he was encroaching our property down with his eaves. It's a little bit more than a, a third of a foot, if, if your lath is located, it's almost entirely his eaves that have never been gutted. All that whole roof line drains water on our property, it's a constant pond. The permit that was issued to take the tree out, he dug a ramp down in to get underneath the ball of the tree, and then just kinda filled it in with soup. I can't even plow without frosting a cake with gravel all over the alley that I have to push back now. I am, I have no agreement with Dean Wood, and I probably will not have an agreement, but I would expect the city to back me on the encroachment. Twice. He's had an air conditioner that sits this far out hanging out in our property. And believe me, I've hit it twice with weed weapon, with my head. So, things probably oughta happen the right way. That, that the line is drawn, and if the line is crossed, then there's a responsive answer, answer to it.
Did Dean tell you he was in agreement with the neighbor, cause he stood here and told us, he has talked to both neighbors, and everything was good, and he even had signatures at one point, am I wrong?
You're incorrect. He suddenly started getting haircuts by my wife. Uh, after not talking to him for years and years and years. We have a history, if you're not already aware of it.
I'm not.
And so, um... You know, the, the, the situation that is often the case with Mr. Wood is that he does the situation and pays the fine fraction later, but it still has happened. Now Keith didn't allow him to put the eve out. I don't know whether he cut his, uh, roof trusses or not, but he said nothing to us, and there it went. And, um, you know, I don't even know if there, I, I realize the city is lacking on, uh, standards, building standards. The cement he's left is hanging out of the ground this much, it's just waiting for a plow to rip it out. So, I mean, I, I'm, I'm asking as a property owner to be protected.
Did you ask him, Joe, about putting gutters on there? I know the water problem, cause Keith Verden said, well, he told, well, I'll get to it when I...
Yeah, I haven't, uh, I haven't spoke to him directly. And he hasn't reached out to me.
He wrote to me, but how soon, who knows?
I didn't, I didn't do anything until I knew the survey was just as I always knew it was. He owned right to the foundation. You go up and you go out. Now, that doesn't allow me to go back. Doesn't allow my property sold later to have a future property owner to go back. Not sure why I'd wanna grab, uh, grant a variance. It diminishes the value of my property. There's probably a way to finally come to an agreement. Um, I just wanted to make sure that I came here and am assured that I have the city's, uh, backing on the encroachment.
I felt like when he first started the project to begin with, he had no right to remove the tree. I felt like he should never, ever, never have done a thing until he had actually owned the property.
Well, but he, he stood here and said, I'm only building to my property line, but then he went ahead and went further than that. So, he misled on that statement.
And that's where I say, is there fines or anything, because I think that, I swear he said he talked to both sides, both neighbors, and everybody was in agreement, and he even was getting signatures.
Well, it doesn't matter what he said, they, he's built over the line, and now the...
So, my question is, what happens if Joe says, no, forget it, I want his crap off my property? What happens then?
That's my question.
That's my question.
Um, we'd have to speak to our attorney more.
I think so too.
But I would think, cause I know the city of Marion did this to one building that built further or closer to the street than what was originally scheduled, they made him take it down and start all over and move it back. So, there is that option, I would think, that he'd have to take it down, set back into within his boundaries if he wanted to add on.
Yeah, I'm not looking to be, you know, uh, uh, stick in the mud here. I just don't find it, we literally, if we built back, our eaves would intersect. I would have to go higher and go above or below, okay? I shouldn't have to, I already own that airspace.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, again, I may, uh, probably get a conversation going with, uh, Mr. Wood, given that the survey is, is the survey.
Did you get, do the property owners on both sides get a copy of the survey?
They, they haven't received it, yeah.
I have not, no.
Are they entitled to it? Is it city property? Is the survey public record?
Public record, it was just given to us.
I'm just clarifying.
Yeah, it can be provided to them.
Yeah, all I have seen is the, physically seen the lath in spray paint. And, uh, the line on the, the cement that was, uh, uh, I'm assuming that's the property line that the city was looking to sell. Again, I, I, I think I can, I won't take any more of your time, I just wanna, uh, I wanted to come tonight to make sure that the survey was done as I had expected it was going to come out, and that I would have, uh, council backing on if I decide, nope, don't wanna sell it, don't want a variance. So, thank you.
Well, you shouldn't have to just roll over and give a variance because someone else bullied their way in.
Well, as I say, it's, goes back to two thousand two.
That's a good word for that.
And that, that first addition was over.
And if this is how it's gonna be, then just build wherever you want and make your neighbor give you a variance.
Right.
It doesn't make any sense.
Right after the, after the fact, so.
Talk to the attorneys and let's...
Thank you.
Joe?
Yeah.
Joe?
Right.
I just have a question. So, the survey obviously pointed out that there is an encroachment of approximately one third of the building on your property. Are you saying additionally that there's an overhang that encroaches beyond that?
The overhang is the encroachment.
The overhang is encroachment.
Correct.
The actual building, in a sense, resides within Mr. Wood's...
The foundation, there's probably about three inches between the foundation to cement, which by the way, would forms just left on the foundation, uh, and the lath. So, if you go straight up, it's his eaves.
It's, okay.
Well, and plus you've got the air conditioner, that's, that's, what is that, three foot, four foot off the ground?
Yeah.
Maybe five?
The air conditioner though, just so I'm clear, in a sense, is dated back to the previous addition, not this most recent.
Correct, correct.
In...
Same foundation line.
Yes, from the best of your knowledge, that, that addition was put on in approximately two thousand and two?
Correct.
And then there was no, no agreement of any sort between...
None.
You and the property.
Yeah, I think, uh, the, the rule may be that he was, uh, um, ignorance is bliss.
Usually is, isn't it?
Right. Thank you.
So, we probably don't, I mean...
Um... I guess I'll, I'll speak, speak to the attorney, see what our options are, um, I, I think we do have grounds to ask it to be either modified or torn down, whatever, um, but I'll, I'll confirm that.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's just a correction.
So, could you elaborate on the measurements used to develop the land area was incorrect? What?
Um...
What was actually the, the error, the bogey in this?
So, uh, I think, again, this was an ordinance, it was, you know, been through three readings, uh, we, we simply had a, the measurements of the property incorrect, and I think what was used was an old plat map that showed the north-south boundary line extending to, um, an older Cherry Street, and then Cherry Street was at a later date, widened, and so that shortened the length of this, this street, um, by a considerable amount, and, uh, that's where the difference came in, it's just a shorter piece of Cedar Street that's being vacated and sold.
Wouldn't this have required a resurveying to finalize?
I, I don't think so.
Just go by whatever record you wanna pull out of the file?
Um, I, I think, uh, it's based on the plat map that shows the right-of-way dimensions. This, I mean... I did calculate these, but, um...
Well, I guess the reason for my inquiry is that how do we prevent a recurrence that could have a larger impact the next time? So, I, I would, I would expect us to identify, in a sense, the, where the ball got dropped, what the root cause of this was, and to put whatever measures necessary in place, and if it is to be resurveyed, then...
Yeah.
That's what it is.
Yep.
Where, what plat map, like the, where'd the plat map come from? The assessor's office? So, it's not the same thing as when we pull it up on the assessor's site?
It is. We don't have the same reference, so, the assessor's site had three hundred thirty B, and the actual click on the parcel is two, two forty six, so...
This is a roll call.
Wymer?
Um... I'm wondering now if we shouldn't have a survey done, I don't know that that assessor's site plat map is always accurate. No?
Galen Kaper, and I live next adjacent to this, and he just had this survey within the last year or so. Because it, it butts up against the back of my property, some of his property and hers.
So, he has an actual survey?
Yeah.
Probably where this stems from, then.
There's stakes and stuff like that are still there.
Him surveying it and not being correct on our end.
So, I thought maybe it'd save him having it received surveyed.
Thank you. I always wish people, if this is important to somebody, I always wish they would be here. Especially when we make these kind of decisions. I can only get it right once, but wrong a lot. Yes. I'm gonna say yes.
Okay.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Rodsick?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Case Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Thanks, Galen.
Possible way reverse second, third reading.
Second.
Cool, Schaefer?
Yes.
Rodsick?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Case Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Wymer?
Yes.
Seven point two lease of office space for Jones County Economic Development.
Um, I don't think we've discussed this really, I brought it up a while back as a possibility, but the, their current office space is, uh... I think they've, they've got a notice to vacate by the end of November, so, um... We, I've had discussions with Derek, uh, the director, a few times, and we work pretty closely, um... We currently aren't using this space for anything else, uh, I, to me, it seemed like a good fit to provide them, uh... I mean, really, it's a part-time office space, they split ti, he splits time between here and Monticello anyway, so... Um, there's a draft lease in the packet, uh, intentionally left the, uh, rent amount blank, um... You know, my understanding is that Monticello provides office space for free, we don't have to do that, but, um, I don't know, um, exactly what the, uh, economic development organization is willing to pay. I think they were paying around three hundred dollars a month previously, maybe more.
There is value in keeping economic development in Animalso. Especially right now, we're looking at a lot of stuff happening. We have, um, the facade program, some catalyst grants. I know that Bryce is looking into different stuff with his buildings. I think it's important to have a strong presence from economic development here in Animalso. Not to mention, we're also the county seat, so...
Well, I do have one problem right now with this, and that is because you're president of this organization...
I won't vote, but I have a voice.
But if you're going to abstain, you should not discuss. I'm just throwing that out there.
So, they'll have access to the building?
Yes. We've talked about ways to make sure that we secure any sensitive information, uh, in case, you know, we're, maybe, possibly our office is closed and they're open, uh, we, we wanna make sure things are secured, so...
Yeah, essentially, they could have a key and come and go at any time.
There, there's a door on the other end of that hallway that, that isn't currently locked, that we could, uh, make sure is secured, um, and that really shuts off this side of the building, so, um... That's pretty much, I think, covers things.
Could I grab the floor?
Yes.
Sure. I'm Matt Behrens, uh, Jones County Economic Development Vice President, Adco, Treasury Secretary Treasurer, Property Taxpayer, two fifteen East Main. Um, a little background on this, economic development, we've had our office in Animalso for a very long time. We've always rented some space, uh, that space has gotten terminated, uh, in the last, how long was Doug, Doug's here, uh, from a Monticello, a year, year and a half he's been over, Mike? Since Derek started, he's been coming over to Monticello regularly. Okay. So, he just, just passed his year, I think, a little over. Um, Monticello provides, real close to Doug's office, um, he is their city administrator, um, and I think it's a very good relationship that you guys have, uh, they provide it free of charge, uh, provide him internet, and I think it, it is very important for that role to be very close to the city administrator. Um, both Monticello and Anmo, and Anmosa put in the same amount of money into our budget. Um, I believe it's ten thousand, don't quote me on that, I'm not the treasurer of that organization. Uh, but I think it's very important, and I think it sends a good message for Anmosa to say, hey, we think it's just as important as everybody else does, we wanna keep, it's good for the county, this is a county organization, but your main two cities are Monticello and Anmosa, and I think, uh, Derek's splitting half his time, could be three days a week in Monticello, two days here, could be three days here, two days there, if there's a lot of stuff going on in Anmosa, he might be here all five days, if there's a lot of stuff going on with Doug, he might be over there. Um, I think it's been a very, very good, uh, relationship having him close to the city, and I think that moves forward in what our vision is. Um, so I would like to, you know, propose to allow, if we have extra office space here in the city, uh, to allow that same that we have in Monticello, um, let Derek work equally for both communities, for the county, and, uh, and move forward from there. Anybody, anyone, any backstory, anything else?
You're, you're not a public, you're, you're a private corporation though, yet.
We, we receive majority of the funds, uh, from the county and the two municipalities, and then we also have private investors too.
But it's a, it's not a public office.
No, no. It, it's not, but the role that that, that position does works best when it's working with the city administration.
Yeah, there's a twenty eighty agreement, but it's a, it's a private organization.
Private organization, correct, yes. Cause our other alternative really is it's hard... Cause our other alternative really is it's hard to go to our other investors and go to Lloyd, you know, for the county and say, oh geez, we gotta pay three hundred dollars a month rent in Anamosa, uh when Doug is giving a very nice office over in Monticello. Um, so that's kinda where we're at right now as a board, is we'd like both communities to even it out and 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 let Derek help both communities out and the county as a whole. Can I make a couple comments?
If you wanna come up to the stand, sir.
Back when Derek got hired, um Jones County Economic Development struggled a little bit to find the person they wanted, and they had to pay more. And that's when they came to you folks, me and the county, not me, City Monticello, and said, we'd like more money. Um, at that time, the city council in Monticello said, you know, with your budget, can you, is there anything you can do to cut your budget a bit? We're happy to give more money, but one of the things we looked at even before Derek started was trying to find free rental space for that office, so that uh the cost for Economic Development could be brought down a bit. Um, in our city hall, uh where Derek has been operating is in a little conference room right next to my office. Uh there's no phone in there. Um, we have cleaned out more of a, call it a maintenance room. It's a it's a nice enough room, but no windows, and he's gonna have a desk there with a lockable door. He will also have a phone, and it's uh outside of a different conference room. Um, my experience with Derek at city hall is he doesn't regularly meet with a lot of people there. Um, it's a place for him to be on his computer, on his cellphone. Um, he has met people occasionally, but that's not the primary use of that space. It's just a a home base, if you will. Um, we also have the Chamber of Commerce in city hall. Uh they do pay rent. Um, and I think our council looks at them as a little bit different. While Economic Development is a private membership type organization, uh the amount of money that goes into Jones County Economic Development from the cities and from the county far surpasses uh what the cities and the county put in a chamber uh of commerce. Chambers are important as well, but um we see that a little as some separation there because of the value Economic Development brings to our city and to the county as far as tax base compared to the chambers in some respects. Um, our chamber doesn't pay utilities. They don't pay for internet. They don't pay for, they pay us for part of this phone, but they don't pay for the phone service, internet, utilities, any of that. So their rent is very minimal also. But I think having Jacob uh nearby, um we do interact a lot during the day. I think if he's here, he's gonna interact with Jacob a lot. Um, there's a lot of things that I can have him work on, uh having him that close to me that I don't have to work on then, uh whether it be a catalyst grant. Um, we're looking at some HUD downtown housing grants. Uh we worked on the main street and the community assessment. I know Anamosa's going through, and and he's put in a lot of time, and it's just nice to have him that close and available to work with me on that, so. So that's where we're at. Um, I know Anamosa and Monticello a lot of times say, well, what are they doing? You know, you we never have to do the exact same, that's for sure, but uh but that's where we're at with them, and and it's worked out well, so. If you have any other questions for our situation?
Think so.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. So do we wanna let him use the room there to the behind Betty and Cody and Rod?
So it's that one over there?
Yeah.
Yes.
Nancy Schaefer, eight oh three North Division Court. Um. I was wondering, does that mean if if they don't allow this, that um he wouldn't promote Anamosa as much as Monticello? If you guys don't let him have free space or minimal charge. Um, also, are your locks all keyed the same?
Not not all of them. I mean.
A good share.
Right now, all of our exterior locks are the same, but we've talked about how we would address that.
So you'd have that expense then?
Um, po- we'd probably have a little bit of expense then.
I guess I just don't see why you would want to compete with um people that are offering office space for rent. And I made a couple calls, and there are um places available about this size, so. For about two hundred and thirty dollars, everything provided. And handicap accessible and privacy, so, thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Well, is Jacob? First and foremost, you you believe that you can secure the premises to a level that we can be comfortable with?
Yes, I do.
At what cost?
I don't have a number to give you. I I think we'd be looking at, I um.
Are the doors sufficient, you think? I mean, just would be just locked, or?
I I think the doors okay. Um, you'd you'd have a a few doors that need rekeyed, but I think the doors themselves are fine. Uh, so, I think you'd have three three doors that need rekeyed. I don't know if that would cost.
I would not look at this as the city is getting into or trying to discredit rental space within the community. I I do, I can really appreciate the the fact of Derek and Jacob working in close proximity to one another. One would like to believe that you could advance a project quicker. Just the accessibility between the two uh two individuals, uh I believe, would would warrant the office space. Uh there's. It it works for Monticello. I don't know why it would not work for Anamosa. I would certainly support the use of this office unless someone can bring to my attention a variable that I'm not considering or seeing.
Looks like a plus.
I make a motion that we allow the uh Economic Development Office here within city hall uh at at no charge. I see you've outlined within this that landlord will pay for utilities and services. I gotta believe our city attorney has, in a sense, drafted this?
Yes.
Who am I to question then? So there's my motion.
Second.
First by Rod, second by Kay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, sir?
So, since we are paying for all utilities and services, if they throw in internet, whatever, we're paying for it?
We we would pay internet. I mean, they could they could use the internet that we have. Um. The only thing in the agreement that we wouldn't provide is telephone services.
But if they're using our internet, are they going through our switches behind our firewall and then have access to our servers?
I, this is beyond me, but I don't think they would have access to the server just be- because they have access to the um internet now. That's something I can follow up with with our IT people, but.
I would like answers to that before I vote on this.
Here. Good, I looked into that. That very question at city hall had come up, and uh just by virtue of using our wireless internet, if he was a real experienced hacker, he might be able to figure out a way, but he could do that from anywhere. So just using our wireless service, the our IT folks in Monticello at ITS said that they saw no risks at all with him accessing our servers. So, and I'm in Jacob's camp. I'm no expert on this, but that's the answer I got.
Well, if he's got your password to your network, he could access your server.
He's accessing our uh public wireless internet?
He's act- okay, he's going through the.
Yep.
He wouldn't have access to the network. He would just have access to the Wi-Fi, which is it, yeah, it would be.
So you're using as a guest?
Yes.
He's using it as a guest, so.
And we have a guest account that we could use.
That nobody knows the password to.
He doesn't have a phone, isn't asking for a phone. His office that we're providing has a phone in it, but there's no additional cost us for that, so I don't think he's demanding a phone. Probably he never uses our phones.
There's there is no need for a phone, and your internet does have the simple sandbox. Any IT provider can do that for you. If they can't, we shouldn't be using them.
Uh gets closer. Just to make sure he's not accessing our network, that's the main thing.
I'm leaving my motion on on the floor.
My second also.
Well, we'll take the vote on that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose?
Nay.
Nay.
I think we had three or two?
So.
Yeah.
So I see my hearing is not very well. How many ayes did?
Two, three, counting you.
Okay. I just was curious as to what the outcome of that was.
Yeah. All right, seven point three, resolution obligating funds from the urban renewal tax revenue fund for appro- appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation, tax increment financed obligations for PTS PKS Hospitality Group Incorporated. DBA American.
To approve.
Aye.
First by Rich, second by John. And it's a roll vote.
Muckar?
Yes.
Rodsmith?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Wymer?
Yes.
Pro?
Yes.
Case Smith?
Yes.
Seven point four, resolution obligating funds from the urban renewal tax revenue fund for appropriations to the payment of annual appropriations, tax increment financed obligations with shell. I'm doing the next succeeding fiscal year for Meadow Ridge Urban Renewal Plan LMI obligation.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Rich, second by Cody. And then is also a roll vote.
Case Smith?
Yes.
Muckar?
Yes.
Rodsmith?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Wymer?
Yes.
Pro?
Yes.
Seven point five, beer and liquor license, renewal of classy liquor license without our service and some of the jail privileges. Tight line down in.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Kay, second by Rich. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose? Carrie, seven point six, review and approval of current bills.
Move to approve.
First by Betty.
Second.
Second by Rod. Any discussion? Questions?
I've got a question. Um, find it. Oh, um, six four two eight zero, size tree service, tree and stump removal, four thousand three hundred ninety. How many trees or where was that at?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Um, three tree removals, Rosemary Lane, Ash Ford present, was twenty nine hundred dollars, and then three hundred for the stump grinding there. Um, tree removal on North Ford, one thousand. And then three stump grindings, looks like North Ford, and then two on Garnavella, North Garnavella.
Do we get bids on taking trees down?
In this case, I don't know if there was other bids.
I mean, there wa- it wasn't a storm or anything, so it was scheduled work, so.
The one on North Ford was fallen down and had had damage and was, I don't know, struck by lightning, or there was a big branch. Maybe not the day that they took it down, but there had been.
There's still a lot of trees that are seem to be scheduled.
Oh, sure. I agree.
Well, and like with the the diseased trees, that could be something that we get bids on to because there's gonna be more and more of them. And instead of always relying on SI, maybe we should get bids to go through, take a look, see what we need to bring down.
I- in terms of getting a kind of an assessment, uh we're looking into that. I think there's a program through uh Iowa State University to help identify the ash trees in the community and any other diseased trees, but that doesn't solve getting rid of them, so that's something we we should we should look at.
Yeah, because that could be an extensive project that needs to be completed that. I think we ought to take a look at that.
And we should have a plan on.
Maybe get bids.
Yeah.
Bids and then a plan on putting some back somewhere.
Replacement or something.
Yeah.
Alliant will give us, and I think Black Hills too will give us trees.
Twenty five, yeah.
Is that the only question in the bill?
I think that's all I had at this time.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Carrie, eight point oh, city administrators report.
Um. Today, I attended the Legislative Policy Committee for the Iowa League of Cities in Des Moines. Um, we met with a couple different uh policy groups that kind of align with our interests. The the chamber uh for the state organization and as well as some of the state agencies, uh the DNR, the state auditor, talked through some of the different uh legislative issues that are coming up and and how that'll impact cities. Um, also today, we are currently in the process of, we were talking about the server a minute ago, uh we we um have our new server um coming online. It's it's online, but we're we're moving files over, so um um we'll be a little bit more secure with that. Um. Let's see. Next week, we have our downtown assessment, so that'll be kind of a big project. Um. Just to oversee that. Um, still setting up meetings, but uh should be good to hear from those economic development professionals, what what we've got, do what we're doing right and what we're doing wrong. Uh try to improve our main street, so. Unless there's questions, I think that's all I've got.
I've got two questions. Um, we haven't gotten department reports for a couple of months.
Uh, we're still collecting them for this month, and uh I have a f- I never re- uh never received them all from the last month, but I'll get the ones that I have sent sent as well.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
From no departments, nobody, none of them?
I, I ha- I have some of them.
Cause I, I do like looking at those to see what, what everybody's doing.
Sure.
Um, then the second question I have is, do you know when we're gonna get the final report on the water, wastewater?
Um. They have a draft, I, I haven't heard back from them when they wanted to come present on that, so I'll follow up.
Okay.
Have you had any time to work on the handbook?
Uh, there, there was some suggestions provided by the city attorney, um, and we're trying to schedule a meeting to sit down and go over those. That's kinda where we're at.
So the water wastewater assessment that was conducted, uh, we still, we have not made the final payment then?
No.
Okay, that's good.
All, all we've done is made that initial payment.
At this time, can you go into detail or elaborate on your, uh, meeting with Adco earlier this month? Is the details or what, what's in the pipeline, what's going on?
Um. I don't wanna. Nothing was discussed definitively, but I mean, they're looking at, at ways to be active in investing in the community, um, so currently pretty much the entirety of their, their investment is tied up into, um, farm ground north of the Dakota Division, and I think they're looking at ways to move, move that and, and invest in a different project. That's primarily what they're looking at.
Uh, is everything in place, uh, as good to go as it can for next week's downtown assessment?
I th- I think so, I, there's still things that need done to s- to finalize, uh, I, I've got to set up meetings with different, different interest groups, um, but as, as far as I know, everything's good to go.
Cause this is rather critical. And that assessment begins on Monday or?
Tuesday, the nineteenth.
So. That means we have four working days to shore up everything on our end.
It goes to the twenty first, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday?
Correct.
Is that everything for Jacob? Nine point oh, mayor and council reports on boards and commissions.
Well, Dale and I went landfill, biggest thing out there is the methane gas, they've got wells that check it. The one nearest the property line is fine, but there's another one way over the levels. It sounds like they're gonna have to go down and pipe in, you can't have it in the water, but you can release it in the air. It's gonna be about, what, fifty to sixty thousand to get that, so they can start releasing from all the methane gas off of the garbage. So we're looking, getting that done. And then emergency management, mainly the mitigation report, they're just doing that. Nine one one, Dubuque County's coming in there at last, so we putting their equipment to, for the communication for the officers and stuff. And evidently, Engelbart's out there, there was kind of a mess made, it's been wet, but they just wanted to get things rock in there and stuff cleaned up before winter, before it froze, maybe too late already, cold as it is, but that was the biggest, biggest thing there. Um, as a reminder, Jones County Tourism will have their annual meeting November nineteenth from five, it's gonna be an open house from five to seven PM at the office.
So, um, yesterday I had a conversation with, uh, Greg Driver, uh, sheriff, Greg Driver, and, uh, with recent events at a hundred and thirtieth street and sixty four avenue.
One fif- no, a hundred and thirtieth and one fifty.
One fifty one, yeah. Uh, I think as a city, we should push pretty hard for the DOT to work with us on some way to make that intersection safer, whether it be closing it or overpass or whatever it needs to be, but, in the new future, very new future, so.
I agree with that, yeah.
Did Springville slowen the speed limit down there, was that the city decision or the DOT decision?
That would be DOT, city wouldn't have any.
I think it was DOT.
They decided that, but I know they had meetings in the city about it, cause one of the council members there and I had a conversation when they were all meeting with DOT, so I wasn't sure who, how the, when they were collaborating, how that came about.
Yeah, the decision would be DOT.
Right, but they did have, do you remember not too long ago, they had meetings there at city?
Yeah, because they were talking about building an overpass there and, so.
And my experience is the speed limit hasn't done a whole lot, you could just be a wealthy person if you could find everybody that was going over fifty five.
I drive there every day.
Yeah.
So.
Many slow down.
Like about eight to ten years ago, we addressed this, Jacob, uh, when Pat Callian was here. And we had a town hall meeting at one time, I believe, and there is some information out there from before, but.
Yeah, cause I know when I was on school board at that time, we had that discussion and sought, they had, I think, what, about six different plans?
Yeah.
Using J turns, using frontage roads, using, closing it altogether, um, there were several options they had.
Yeah, I spoke with the DOT not too long ago, I mean, it was before the recent events, um, and just, we were talking generally more from a planning perspective, uh, being that we've got the new development in Meadow Ridge, there's probably gonna be more people trying to skip the true intersection and jump on one fifty one there, um. We talked about, they, they brought out all those scenarios that were discussed and we talked about kind of the future growth of the community and some different concepts, but, uh, it's obviously something that needs revisited.
I would like to pair up with the sheriff's department and, and Greg and push hard for this. I think with, with them on board and the city, we could get more done than just the city going in. If we can get the sheriff to say, yeah, this isn't safe, just go that avenue.
Anybody else on there?
Well, yes, the friends of the library are having their Christmas sale Friday and Saturday. And they all wanna go down and buy stuff, because I'm getting rid of stuff, so you'd be able to buy.
Is it just Christmas, like Christmas ornaments, Christmas decorations?
Yeah, it's just Christmas stuff for the friends of the library. And they, Rebecca told me they had awesome Halloween program with very, very good attendance, which is awesome.
So is that everybody? Kent, we know public what business, what accounts on items, now don't need to jump that. Moving right along and eleven point oh adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
First by Rich, second by Rod, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
My feet are, we gotta, we gotta go home. My feet are swinging in the air and there's.
Don't move, you're stirring the ground.